Ladies and gentlemen, it's 7:30. Let me call to order the Merrimack Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, May 19th. Let me remind everyone who is going to speak to make sure the microphones are turned on, sign in on the clipboard and speak clearly into the microphone. Let me announce that our next Planning Board meeting will be June 2nd at 7:30 PM in this room. Also, Tim, in terms of appointing an alternate in for a vacancy, who did we pick last time? Do we need to alternate or does it matter?
If you want to keep things even, Jeff should be the next appointment. The last time, both were appointed, but Jeff was...
Jeff's shaking his head no.
Jeff was quickly overtaken when Mike arrived shortly thereafter that night.
Sounds good. Well, Jeff, if you still feel like you're getting your feet wet, we'll let Nelson do it? Okay. So we'll go with Nelson again and we'll even him up a little bit later. So I'll appoint Nelson for the vacant full-member position. And with that, it brings us to our Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Tim, what do you have for us?
First thing in your packet, you should have a memo dated May 15th regarding the two regional impact determinations for tonight. We have two projects, the Matty Chori waiver of full site plan review for a restaurant at 480 DW Highway and the Merrimack Premium Outlets upcoming two-lot subdivision. Staff is recommending that the board determine that these projects are not of regional impact as they do not meet the criteria we discussed back in December.
Is there any discussion by members of the board?
It's only a technical discussion, probably it'll come up later. Where the heck is he gonna park for that restaurant?
That's a discussion we'll have next in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think there'll be a discussion about that.
All right, okay.
Any other discussion on either of the regional impacts? What's... Nelson?
I understand the one about Chori, but what's the other one?
Merrimack Premium Outlets, if you recall, about two years ago, two years ago this June, they received a variance to subdivide the lot where the outlets are currently located into two for financing purposes for the future phase so they can finance that separately. They didn't meet the lot size and frontage requirements. The board granted that variance and they have submitted an application, it'll be on the agenda for June 2nd, to consider that subdivision.
For expanding?
Nelson, are your microphones on?
No, this is purely the subdivision to chop the lot. The actual site plan for the expansion will be coming at some point in the future.
Okay, thank you. I didn't get a memo on that one, but it's okay.
Would the board members like to address both regional impacts at once or deal with them separately or...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept both the, for both these applications, that we accept Tim's suggestion that they do not meet the criteria for regional impact.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Christensen. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 for that determination. Tim, is there anything else as a part of your...
Couple of things. First off, recently-appointed alternate Matt Fortin has let us know today that he will not be joining the Planning Board because he would be moving to Florida for a re-assigned new job. So unfortunately, we haven't had a chance to actually have Matt at a meeting, but I think the council was, had some foresight in only appointing him through this June anyway, so that term would have been coming up next month for reappointment again. So that vacant, that alternate position will again be vacant come June 30th. On the topic of terms, Desiree is the only other current member whose term is scheduled to expire on June 30th. Just suggest that if you're interested in reappointment, to go see Becky in the Town Manager's office. And lastly, just wanted to inform the board, we've welcomed Emily Edwards as a planning intern in my office for the summer. She's gonna be working with us three days a week for a couple hours, a few hours a day. She's a student at Dalhousie University in Nova Scotia, Canada, and resident of Nashua. She'll be helping out on a variety of things. We're gonna have her involved with some plan review activities as well as some work with myself, doing some preliminary work in anticipation of the upgrade of the economic development website.
Thank you for that, Tim. Is there any other comments or questions by members of the board for the staff as part of their report? Lynn?
Do we have any update on the trash on Turkey Hill Road?
I do not have an update for you. Dawn has been on vacation, so...
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Today, I've printed out 118 pages of ZBA amendments.
The zoning ordinance amendments?
Yes. I'm not being funny about it, but it's, you know, I don't know if we've all got the capability of printing out that amount of paper. It was a lot.
Anybody who wants to get them printed, just let us know and we'll make sure we have a copy for you.
I made them, but I just make a point.
Sure.
Any others? With that, that completes the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. It seems wise, based on the recommendation of the staff, that we reorder item three and four on the agenda to take up number four, which is the recommendation to call the performance bond for Value View Revocable Trust and their emergency access rate. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we consider that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet, you'll find a memo dated May 15th from myself regarding this performance bond for the administrative approval. Just by means of background, the administrative approval was granted back in August of 2012 to allow for the development of four lots of record. That included the improvements to the roadway, the emergency access rate grading and drainage improvements. As I'm sure everyone around the table and involved in the project is aware, those improvements had not been completed and it's been a pretty sore subject of frustration for the board, the neighbors, the people in the neighborhood. The performance surety for those improvements is due this month, so that we need to determine an appropriate course of action right now. Public Works has been out to the site and can report that significant progress has been made towards the completion of those improvements. We do understand that they are still not totally complete by tonight's meeting, however, given the amount of work that has taken place over the course of the past month, it's our recommendation that the board extend the performance surety to a date of June 17th, which is the day following the June 16th Planning Board meeting, to allow the applicants an opportunity to complete those improvements. And at such time, I think we'd be in a better position to make a decision on the two-lot subdivision. So in addition to that, when we get to item three on the agenda, my recommendation for that as well will be to continue to June 16th pending further development of the improvements out at the site.
Any discussion on the issue for members of the board? Nelson?
Do we have any commitment from the applicant, from the developer, that he's going to do this this time?
And that it means anything?
From all indication, the contractor has been diligently working out there and working with Public Works to ensure that everything is being done properly. I do know that they had done some base paving work that had to be torn out and redone because the pavement wasn't at proper temperature, but I do know that the contractor is working diligently towards completing these improvements. I have not had any contact with the applicant himself. I do know his attorney is here tonight, should there be any specific questions, but she's also relatively new to the case and may not be in a position to answer any and all questions at this point, but that's where I stand right now.
I would hope the applicant would be able to answer the question, that they can meet this date that we're moving it to. I want some commitment from them that that's gonna happen after all these years.
Well, I would offer up, for a little bit of benefit of the doubt for the applicant on this narrow regard in that they're clearly spending some money to do what they're doing out there now and they're trying to get it done. Whether they will actually get it done or not, you know, frankly, I believe that the actions speak louder than words and I'll have a look at it on June 16th. But the applicant has got his wallet and his requirements for us aligned at the moment, so...
I'd just like to hear it from the applicant. Thank you.
He's not here.
But his attorney is.
He isn't here and although I've never met the attorney and we'll hear from her in a second, gladly, really wouldn't, I wanna see the action more than the words, but Lynn...
Two questions, I think, Tim. Is the work that's being done acceptable as far as our DPW is concerned?
The work that has been done to date has been inspected and reviewed by Public Works, yes.
And is acceptable? And if we called the bond tonight, would that be sufficient for us to not only complete the work, but will we have the time and capability of doing it?
I can't answer the second part of that question, but in terms of the amount, given the amount of work that's happened in the last month, we certainly have more than enough funds available in the surety to cover any work that's remaining.
But do our guys have the time to do it?
I couldn't answer that question.
I would suggest, Lynn, if I may, that if Public Works had to take the job on tomorrow, that by the, they wouldn't be able to finish the job themselves. I know from going up there on Monday and talking with the contractor, that I know what's been envisaged is going to happen. The town wouldn't have the resources to do that. It would still be a question of mobilizing suitable subcontractors to do the job. My guess is that if, but the quickest way to get it done, much as though I'm very unhappy with how long it's taken, is to leave things as they are. It'll probably get done that way quicker than if we decided to try and do it. Not criticizing Public Works, they don't have the sort of things for doing, grass...
Which is, which is why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I think, I think...
That's, that's all I need.
Perfect. Please introduce yourself if you've signed in and then tell us a little bit about the viewpoint from the applicant's standpoint.
Make sure the light is on bright green.
I can hear you over the loudspeakers, just bring it a little closer to yourself.
Is that better?
Hit the button one more time.
Better?
There you go.
Lovely.
Thank you. I'll be brief. My name is Pat Pansiaco and I was retained by Mr. Maggio the end of last week. I think it was Thursday I contacted Tim that I had just received a call. I had yet to meet with them, but I did meet with them, him and his wife, on Friday morning very early. And I met with Keach Nordstrom today and I actually went out to the site. So I think I've got my head wrapped around in a visual to see what's going on out there. And there's a few more things that I've asked Tim to help me to understand and will no doubt be speaking within the next couple of days. What's clear to me here is the board's been very patient and I'll thank you for that. But what I can say also is, everything that could have gone wrong out here, I think, did and then some, from the applicant's point of view, not having anything necessarily to do with the town. But as I think has been reported to you, there's been a great deal of progress out there in the past week or so even. I think the board has the applicant's attention and if somebody has come to me in the frenzy that they did on last Friday morning, I think they're listening. So what I'm asking is, and like I said, I'll be brief, I would like to respectfully request that the board follow staff's recommendation, allow me to work with Tim and any, in Public Works and as well as Keach Nordstrom, he and I, Steve Keach, also talked about how we can bring this to a head and get this work all taken care of as quick as possible so that the town's in a better position. One concern that he and I both have is to make a very clear list of what has yet to be done, have it approved by Public Works, and then ride herd till it gets completed in a timely fashion and done in the right way. So with that, I'll just again request that the board support staff's recommendation and allow us to work together and come back with more specific details on June 16th.
How confident are you with that June 16th deadline?
I know I'll be here. I can't speak exactly to, oh, it'll be 100% done. I don't feel confident to do that. If I'm gonna represent that to the board, I'm gonna know that for certain. My understanding is that is the goal, but I will tell the board, I am a little bit concerned about some of the heavy equipment work that still is yet to be done on the lots and what kind of a finished product will be there if the top coat is put down prematurely. I have a construction background before I went to law school and that is a concern. When a town is asked to take over a road and accept the promised improvements as they were proposed, it's usually customary to have everything look beautiful and not have other threatening equipment crossing back and forth along the road. Now that's a conversation that I, and a concern I have to vet with Tim and Public Works. But aside from the final coat, I'm hearing that everything else would be absolutely done and I'm not telling you tonight that I don't think the final coat won't be done, I just don't know. And quite frankly, I'm wondering if that's in the best interest of the town, to have that put down now as opposed to maybe 60 days from now so that all the equipment is off the site and you have a nice finished product.
I can offer my own opinion. I think that people get heavy equipment on and off of lots on public roads all the time without destroying them. And so if he puts down his finished coat and then destroys it with his own equipment, it's probably not a good approach to do. He probably doesn't wanna sit here in that position on June 16th.
Point taken, and I understand that. I also think that too, and this is something that I have to talk to the professionals who actually put their hands on this work, this is a rather unique site. I was really quite surprised when I went out there. I had not pictured it. It's quite steep, it's very rocky. So I'll defer to the professionals on that. I'm certainly not gonna be making that decision. And we'll be working with staff to come back to the board with a complete package of how everything will be 100% and promptly, whenever the town says it has to be.
Thank you for that. I personally appreciate your involvement and I appreciate what you've offered for testimony. I don't know what's gone wrong on the site. I think that we would attribute quite a lot of that to man-made issues rather than natural ones, even though it is a bit of a steep site. I understand, you know, going out and seeing it for the first time, it's obviously something new for you, but it has never been new for Mr. Maggio. He knew what it looked like before he ever put pen to paper to come apply for something. So anyway...
Understood. And I agree with the chairman. I do think there's some man-made issues here too. I'm not denying that at all. I see my job as trying to pull the loose ends together so everybody's happy at the end of the day.
I think, to be clear, I support the staff's recommendation for the extension, but I also agree with how you started your presentation, that the board's been patient and probably more patient than it wants to be, that it's asking a lot of the board to bite its tongue one more time for this because it's been quite a bit.
I understand and I appreciate that. It's been a long haul for the board.
I think that one of the things that I've heard, either related to this or some of the other projects, that there are bonds involved in is, from Public Works, is that it's, if there's a way to get the applicant to do his work, it's the cheaper, better way to get it done rather than having the bond pulled and that unfortunately is helping your client a little bit, that it's, if we can get him to do it, that's by far the better choice rather than calling a bond.
I understand. I understand and I appreciate the comments, but like I said, it'd be a pleasure to work with him again and we are hoping to come back with good news next month.
I think you're representing him well. Any other comments or questions? No, Nelson? Comments, questions? What's the will of the board?
I would only hope that you really do hold his feet to the fire because I think his feet need toasting.
Mr. Millens, I can promise you that.
I got that feeling. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we grant an extension as requested both by the attorney here this evening and by through the staff's recommendation that we do not do anything with the bond until 17th of June this year.
Second by Desiree. Any other discussion?
Is there any public comment on this?
This portion is not really a public hearing, this is simply the action on the bond. The public hearing is associated with item number three.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion to defer action on the bond until our June 16th meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to do that. Let's take up item three on the agenda, which is the same project, but let me read it into the record. Keach Nordstrom Associates Inc. is the applicant and Value View Revocable Trust, Carol Maggio trustee as the owner. Discussion and possible action regarding a request for reinstatement of conditional final approval and a six-month extension for compliance with conditions of an approval granted by the Planning Board on July 23rd, 2013, and July 8th, 2014 to subdivide one lot into two single-family residential lots located at 15 Value View Drive in the R Residential District, Tax Map 5C, Lot 142, and the item is continued from the April 21st, 2015 Planning Board meeting, among others. Tim, if we last approved them in July of 2014, then they expired in January?
Actually, there were several extensions beyond that. The two, the two main extensions were those two dates in July of 13 and 14. There were several subsequent extensions that were less than six months granted by the board following that July 2014. I think the last one expired in December of this year. I know there was some talk at one of the meetings about a Thanksgiving deadline, which then got pushed out into December, at which point the applicant went to Florida and we didn't hear anything until he came back. So there is nothing new in the packet regarding this. The memo is still the April memo that Donna had prepared and based on the discussion and the decision made by the board regarding the performance surety, I'd recommend that this also be continued to the June 16th meeting and that it be announced, this is the only public notice.
Is there any discussion by members of the board? Lynn?
I'm certainly not prepared to approve this at this point. I would make a motion that we continue this until the June 16th meeting?
Motion to continue, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fault. Recognizing that some of the butters are here, I think it probably is worthwhile to pause and at least hear from them, even though...
I have no problem with that.
With that, are there any butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in?
Drawing lots.
Come on up here. That way you can sign in on the pad and...
Good evening. My name is Dave Hammond. I live at 18 Value View Drive and I'd like to say my wife and I would love to tell you that we're surprised with the delays and excuses that we've heard over the past year, but since we're going through, we're trying to resolve issues with Mr. Maggio for the past 10 months on our home, these excuses have become expected for us, unfortunately. We've had issues where we've, it's been a very frustrating and painful process to the point where we've had to get creative to get Mr. Maggio's attention to try and resolve these issues because he's kinda pushed us to the side, said it's not his problem to fix, read your warranty, things like that. And we've got his attention, but still the excuses still come. So my wife and I would like to recommend or request of the board in order to have Mr. Maggio go on his way as quickly as possible to deny his request to split the lot in the two and finish the current house he has and move on. So with that...
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Are there comments or questions for Mr. Hammond? I think that my own personal concern is that if these, if you deny this request, then the construction on that road will stop tomorrow morning too and then we're calling the bond in June. Nothing gets done.
So I, I understand that.
And you're okay with that, I guess?
Well, so I am, well, I guess my response would be, if the continuance to the 16th is to finish the road and at that point, the decision is made to deny the extension or the, the split in the two, I'm okay with that as well.
Let's see where we go with that. Nelson?
Also, he answered my question.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Any others that wish to, Mr. Amick?
All right, he did a, he did a great job, so not much I can say to follow that, but yeah, I'm all for, my thoughts are, he did make a lot of progress.
Oh, sorry, introduce yourself, Mr. Amick.
My name's Steve Amick, I'm of the Levin Valley View. My thoughts also are, or at least until he's allowed to subdivide that lot and build another house, that he finish everything. He do the top coat, you name it. He did, a lot of work did get done in the last week or so, but you know, there's a lot more to be done and I don't trust this guy. And I was out talking to his site contractor that he has, he had a, he had a company last year, apparently they went bankrupt, so the combat guy is back. That's all I know of him, is his company. And he sounded like they were gonna put the top coat down within the next month. Didn't express any problem with that, you know, it's just, it's gonna get done. So, you know, my thoughts are, the road needs to get done, you know, get the heck out of there. You know, my perspective is that I'm not a, I didn't buy a house from Maggio. I bought an existing residence in Merrimack three years ago and when I signed the papers, the trees went down on Pleasant Dead End and I've been dealing with this guy ever since, for three years. He's left a mess in front of my house, he's left machinery in front of my house, he's congregated in my front yard and ignored my presence in coming out, certainly was not courteous. We had some issues with him driving up and down the emergency access road and at one point, my wife having a conversation with him on the phone, he made his way up the road during that conversation, you know, asked me if that was planned or not. I suspect it was, but this is what I've been dealing with for three years and I'm happy to see the progress. It's great to see, finally he's picking up his mess and I'd like to see him continue to pick up his mess before he hammers another nail. That's what I think needs to happen. Forget about the heavy equipment, you know, take care of that, worry about that later. That's, that's my thoughts.
Thank you for your thoughts. I know that there were some curbs and things on the roadway in front of your house and a little bit down away from the emergency access road from your house, where there were some curbs that were damaged or taken out or whatever as a part of this process. Has there been any work towards putting those back?
Yeah, those were put back this week.
Okay, so those curbs are back where they belong?
Yeah, and he did, he did grade it, he put topsoil down. There was one area where I had to put the wall back, where I talked to the contractor out there and I said, they didn't put any topsoil down there. And, you know, he kinda took care of it. I don't know what the standard is for the depth of the topsoil. My guess is he just scattered a little over the hard-packed dirt that was there. So I'm a little curious also to see if there's gonna be any looking after later on to see the finished product, you know, in a, later in the summer.
Have they planted any grass seeds or anything on that?
He did, they hydroseeded it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, and again, I'm happy with the progress, but knowing what we've dealt with for the past few years, I, I would not trust this man at all, so...
Thank you for the comments. Any other butters or citizens wish to weigh in? Hearing none, although it wasn't really an official public meeting, a public hearing, we'll close it. And so there is a motion and second on the floor to grant the extension for the reinstatement.
To, to continue the application to the, not to grant an extension.
Yeah, that's what I meant to...
I did.
Motion was Lynn, second was Desiree.
Desiree made the motion.
Desiree seconded the motion.
Yes, to continue the consideration of the request for reinstatement and extension. Did I get it right that time?
Yes.
Better. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, all I would suggest is that the two gentlemen from the public might want to take the attorney outside afterwards with a baseball bat and defer...
Hey, hey, hey. Let's just...
I think you should at least, at least you should at least have a communication with and understand the situation.
Yes.
You know me, I say the right things.
Probably not. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to continue this item till June. June 16th is the meeting, there isn't any other public notice, so... With that, we are up to item five on our agenda. Old Blood Properties LLC and Joseph K. and Mary L. Kara as the co-applicants and co-owners in its review for consideration of final approval of an application for a cluster subdivision proposing 72 cluster residential lots and four open space lots located at Old Blood Road in the R1 Residential District, Tax Map 5B, Lot 1-1, 2, 3, 3-1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 231. And the item is continued from the December 16th, January 6th, January 20th, January, February 17th, March 17th, and April 21st Planning Board meetings. Tim, where are we at with this one?
You will have in your packet an email from Ken Quentin from Meridian Land Services requesting...
You will have in your packet an email from Ken Clinton from Meridian Land Services requesting continuance to the June second meeting. This continuance was at my request primarily. The plans and information that were submitted by Meridian were not received in the office until late day on Wednesday. I had packets to get prepared for Friday. Less than two days was certainly not going to be enough time for me to do a complete review nor the other departments and committees to do their review. So, in conversation with Mr. Clinton and the applicant, we agreed that an additional two weeks should give us the sufficient time to review those plans and we expect that they'll be requesting a conditional final approval at the meeting on the second.
Thank you for that introduction, Tim. And in fairness to the applicant, a goodly number of these continuances were from meetings where we did a little bit of business and then, and then moved them further because we weren't ready for final approval. But is it the ambition of the staff and the applicant that June, the June second meeting is it? That they'll actually be ready for...
That is the, that is the expectation.
End of the road, done, vote on that?
That's the expectation.
Okay. Any discussion by the board?
Mr. Chairman, given that this has dragged on for so long and there are a lot of interested parties, I'm sort of a little bit unhappy that this is going to go through June the second with no notice to anybody. I think a lot of people have almost fallen asleep wondering where we are on this one. I feel that they ought, and I don't wish to be difficult, but I do think there's got to be some rather more public pronouncement that this is going to be the final date. We've heard a final date, a final date, and a final date. I think, and I don't know how to do it, and I'm looking at Tim for advice, but I do think we shouldn't just simply, simply say now this is going to be the final date without people knowing about it.
I would actually disagree with the assertion that this, they've said that this is the final date moving forward. I don't think they've had any intention at any of the previous meetings of seeking an actual final approval at any of those meetings, knowing that this was a large and complex project that had a lot of moving parts, particularly when we get into the roadway and the intersection improvements. I, I do believe now that we finally have gotten a peer review from CLD. That wasn't something that had happened until this most recent submission. So, this is really the first time that I feel confident in saying that, yes, they are moving towards a final.
Yeah, that there was an expectation that we would take up final... And I think also, I would offer the comment that, at least by appearances, the people who want to come and speak and the folks that you're talking about with school and traffic are not butters who would receive a butter notification even if you ask the applicant to redo it.
Okay.
They're citizens in the general public, but they wouldn't necessarily get a butter notification even if you forced there to be another one.
And all the butters have been recently notified because the wetland permit has been submitted to the state, so all of those have been notified of the wetlands permit as well.
Mr. Chairman, then I would like to withdraw my thought because if that's happened, then I'm a lot happier.
And I'm comfortable that all of those others that are interested parties are paying attention to what's going on and will be here if they want to be.
Okay, then I, I just, if they've been noted through because of the wetlands permit, then I'll shut up.
Very good. And so what's the will of the board with respect to Old Blood Properties?
I'll move we continue this to the June second?
Yes.
With no further notice.
Is there a second for that? Second by Councilor Mahon. Any other discussion? All in favor of the continuance to June second, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven zero zero for item number five. Brings us to item number six on our agenda, which is 526 DW LLC. As the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a forty-four thousand square foot commercial storage building located at 526 DW Highway in the C2 Commercial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Wellhead Protection Area, and one hundred and five hundred year flood and hazard areas, Tax Map 5D2 Lot 1. Tim, what do we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm sure that all of you are well familiar with the site being the former Xylas. It has been the home of Vault Motor Storage for some time now. Mr. Morgan, who operates Vault, is looking at the construction of an additional forty-four thousand square foot building to the rear of the existing buildings on the site. The memo from Julian outlines the items that, and comments that staff has at this point and we certainly are welcoming of Mr. Morgan and seeing that the business has been successful and continuing to expand. I think we can work our way through the, the issues that remain to be, that remain to be resolved and we'll get there.
Is it the staff's recommendation that we're gathering information and perhaps continuing this for future date? Or that we've got to...
At this stage, I will note that we did not have the escrow for the peer review consultant until late last week. So, CLD has not yet performed their peer review of the project. Our recommendation is to continue the project at least to June second to allow for CLD to complete that review before making any final decisions on the project. However, if you do disagree and are comfortable with the, the plan that, and the applicant is comfortable with having to deal with those engineering review comments, then we do have a proposed notice of decision should you decide to go that direction.
Thank you, Tim. Let me begin by saying I'm glad your business is successful and I want to compliment you on what you've done to the site on your own since the last time we saw you, obviously. Red and white Xylas striped building with the damaged roof and all of that and then it was first while painted and then reskinned, but the trees and the little fences are just such a really, a small thing that made such a dramatic improvement to the site that I don't want to miss the opportunity to compliment you on that and thank you for doing that. I think it's really made all the difference, so... With that, tell us about your project.
Sure. My name is Eric Mitchell, my office prepared this for 526 DW LLC. Charlie Morgan is here as principal of the, as owner. Site is about eight point three three acres. The site plan that we have done up is an addition of about forty-four thousand square feet building in the back. We're adding that one building. The project itself, as was stated, was a former Xylas site and is proposed to be an additional building for Vault Motor Storage. The existing buildings that are out there are about sixty-five thousand square feet, so this will be an additional forty-four thousand square feet for the site. The building itself would be about twenty foot, twenty-four foot high walls with a peaked roof would be about thirty feet from the, the ground. It is a one-story building and it's to be used for storage of boats, RVs. There may be motorcycles and some other cars inside, but it's for inside storage. There will be no outside storage of, of vehicles. The site, just for your information, we did get a variance zoning board of adjustment to allow a company of light manufacturing called Airmax to go into the proposed building, but they were going to be a tenant and they have since dropped out of being a tenant. So, the, the only use that's out there right now is for the Vault Motor Storage and that's what Charlie proposes to do is to expand his business that he has there. We recognize that the, there's questions that need to be responded to. Once we get CLD report, we're willing to work with the board's recommendation, whether it's to be continued for two weeks or whether it's conditionally approved. We understand the memorandum that the town has written and I think we're able to take care of those issues. We also have a fire department letter that we can satisfy with, with the fire department on that. So, we're here to do as the, the board wishes. And Charlie make care to speak or not, but...
Well, I'd appreciate it if we could make it a conditional because we're in the prime building time right now and every week is...
I don't think your microphone's on, Mr. Morgan. Turn that on and bring it a little closer to you. It says push.
Okay, is that, okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I would appreciate if I, I could salvage the next couple of weeks because we're in valuable building time right now and every week, every week counts and before you know it, September's here and I very much would like to get this building up and finished and like all the ground stabilized and, and, and be ready to, to open our, you know, to do business October, November and that's, that's when our prime season begins. I've been a builder all my life and the, the spring and the summer go very, very quickly and if we get any hangups with anything, you know, it just, it's very painful. But if you can consider a, you know, a conditional permit or approval, I'd appreciate it.
Tim, with respect to Mr. Morgan's request, he's got to have signed plans before he's getting building permits, right?
That's correct.
And so whatever conditions CLD comes up with and fire department, conservation commission and all of that stuff would have to be fulfilled before we sign them and then, and as a practical matter, that probably the best that would be is, you know, obviously we got to be here, so June second is a likely date for getting plans signed even if they were all complete. So, I'm not sure it saves you any time to doing the difference because, because you ultimately have to get to a completed set of plans with signatures.
And we're, we're working on ten days from CLD's review as well, so we may not even have CLD's review until right before that meeting on June second.
And so if CLD tells you to make some changes to your plan, that's probably going to be the issue that takes the, more time rather than our own planning board review in terms, because we're only two weeks away from that date. But I am sensitive to the, to your request to get it moving. I always want to be able to accommodate an applicant's request. I just don't think it'll save you any time one way or another, so...
Just with respect to application completeness, I think we probably have enough information to make a informed decision, so we'd recommend that the board accept the application as complete.
All right, well, let's take that question up. What's the will of the board on completeness?
I move that we accept the application as complete.
Okay, is there a second for Desiree's motion? Second by Ms. Christensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Seven zero zero to accept the application as complete. I know that there's a sidewalk waiver letter in here and so that's worthy of some discussion and potentially, although there's no members of public here, we could technically open and close a public hearing. Does the board have any more questions for the applicant about what he's got proposed and what, how he wants to proceed? Nelson, I see you kind of leaning forward.
Well, are we going to talk about the sidewalk and the waiver and are the... I gather the drainage, I'd like to know how the drainage works. I know it must be described in some of the literature, but it's not clear to me how, how you're handling the drainage on this site right now. That would be a concern that I want CLD to look at, but let's hear it from you.
Yeah, I agree that CLD will be looking at that. The drain, the site itself is very sandy. When I say sandy, I mean sandy. And what we have is the site will drain towards the rear and we have a large infiltration basin at the rear of the site and at, in the top of the bank that's there. So, most of the stormwater we have will infiltrate back into the ground. And that's primarily how we're taking care of the increase of runoff, was primarily through infiltration. There will be a emergency spillway in case the pond happens to get too full and it'll have a place to go over without breaching, but it, everything will primarily be collected in that one pond.
Where does it go from there when it overflows?
There is a small wetland right in the very back of the property. That wetland itself is also part of the hundred-year flood plain. I don't know how much flow actually goes through there anymore. When the highway was put in, it cut off some of the areas that would have been backwater or other flows. It is still part of the floodway because it may back up into there, but there isn't much flow that goes in any one particular direction. But it would go down over the bank, down into the wetland once it's, if, if it was to overflow.
And what do your calculations show with regard to the twenty-five, fifty-year storm?
I believe we're using the fifty or hundred-year storm to see where the, how much level that we have to go over, but that's something that CLD will also take a look at.
Yeah, I was just wondering where, where it went. This ultimately drains to Babusik Brook?
I believe so.
Yes, I would think so too. I just wanted to hear from the applicant. Okay, then that's, that is the only other question I had beyond the sidewalk and entrance to the, to the DW Highway, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Nelson. Mike?
Just to follow up from Nelson's questions, the, the proposed stormwater improvements are simply just for the new building area, not for the existing front area, correct?
It's to take any increase in runoff from the site. Most of the site right now is, a lot of it's open gravel, what's paved is paved. A lot of that heads towards the DW Highway, not towards the back of the lot. Everything about, from the middle of the existing building towards the, will flow towards the rear. So, we're taking any additional drain, any existing drainage that's going down from the site, which is probably the back two-thirds, will all go towards the back the way it does now.
Now, the stuff that's coming to the front, I, I agree with you that it's sort of from the existing buildings, but one of the, a little bit more of the history over the last time we saw this applicant was providing some relief to allow the Vault Motor Storage without really going into any detailed site plan review. And as a result of that, the original Xylas development never got site plan review. So, there's never been any drainage calculations on any of the front. And so I have some interest in knowing what's going on on the front of the lot and whether it requires any intervention, even though it's been there for a long time. If you're dumping water on the neighbors, it's probably worthwhile to take now as the time to do something about it, I would think. I don't know if you have comments or thoughts about that.
I don't have a specific comment, but that's something that we can look into for the board. What I would say is that the number of years that that's been paved in the front of that lot has been many years and I don't know that, I wouldn't be the one to know, other than I did go to the auctions for Christmas time several times, but I don't know if there was ever a stormwater problem into the highway. So, that whatever was in there, even though there may not be much pipes in the ground, it never created a problem or hasn't created a problem up to now. But we can talk with Public Works and also take a look at the, the drainage there to make sure it's adequate to go into the future. I just believe there hasn't been a problem in the past, so I don't think what's existing would be creating a problem.
Mike?
With regards to the new building and the roof runoff, how is that going to be managed? Is that going to go to the ground surface before it goes to the catch basins?
We have, I think the original plans that were submitted had the, the ridge line going east and west and so the, the drip edge would be on the south and north side of the building. We've asked that to be changed to go, the ridge line going north and south, so the water would come off, one, so that the drip line would not be over the overhead doors, so the water would come down. And two, so that it would be, we'd have some area between the two buildings, some area for the water to infiltrate and then go along the surface into catch basins, which are going to be located at all four corners of the building. So, the, with the water coming off the drip edge heading towards the east or leading towards the DW Highway itself will be in, go onto the ground before it goes, drains into the catch basins. The rest of it will come down into the back. Some of it will drain into the ground too, next to the pavement, before it gets into the catch basins as well.
So, the idea of infiltrating is, is great. I like that idea a lot. Certainly it promotes groundwater recharge and being relatively in the area, that makes a lot of sense. There's some provisions already discussed about limiting the use of deicing fluids and practices and as long as that can be maintained, it seems like that's the right retrofit here. It gives, it gives that balance, but I'm just curious as to how you see that interplaying with the uses of the site and whether you can, you know, marry the benefits of good groundwater recharge, but good quality groundwater recharge and not impacted by salt or other contaminants.
Correct. And I believe the Conservation Commission had some requirements they wanted to have on the plan. We did put those on the plan, so the, the use would be, was it GoPro?
Green Pro.
Green, Green Pro snow.
Yeah, Green Snow Pro and no salt.
Certified to do that and then also the lack of fertilizer in any of the seeding that is out there. And so that would also be part of the, part of the plan.
So, the Green Snow Pro practice would be to minimize your salt use. It wouldn't be a no-salt use.
Green Snow Pro is a minimized salt use and so we would have to sort that out here as a board because typically in a wellhead protection area site like this, we'd ask for a no-salt limitation.
You have two different, if you look in the proposed conditions, you have comments from Merrimack Village District that says no deicing compounds and then you have the Conservation Commission, which recommends Green Snow Pro and limiting of the salt and deicing compounds. So, MVD, because it is in the wellhead area, is recommending that the board allow no-salt deicing compounds on the site.
Have you been using any salt on the site lately? And foresee any real need to start?
We have plow trucks, right? We, we, we get rid of it right away and the sun, if you get rid of it right away, we don't have a problem.
Make sure you switch your microphone on, I'll get close to it.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we, we have a plow truck right on site. It stays right there and I'm very sensitive about cleaning ASAP before any ice builds up or anything like that. So, if you get it early, the sun hits it, we, because I have the same, the same issue with other buildings that I own. If you, if you get it early and plow it quickly, then Mother Nature can, is very helpful.
So, if we followed MVD's suggestion to say that the site has a limitation going forward, that there's no salt use on it?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
No problem with that, okay. Mike?
Do I ask one more? So, when, when we do infiltration, right, the, the biggest concern is that's great, we get the water in, but what happens if something spills, right? So, with vehicles and older vehicles, just concerns and questions as to how you main... So, with vehicles and older vehicles, just concerns and questions as to how you maintain or what your expectations are for your clients with regards to having good, maintained vehicles that aren't leaking gas and oil.
Okay, last year, we had 330 vehicles in there. And most of them were, most of them were high-end vehicles. These RVs are very expensive RVs, $300,000, $500,000. They don't leak, okay? And the cars that we had were mostly, you know, high-end cars where people just don't even want them out in the. Salt and sand or anything. They simply don't drip. However, if we.
You touched your microphone off there when you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to this stuff. Okay?
It's okay.
We have, we have a inventory of pan, catch pans. The manager is always inspecting, and if we see any drippage, we put the pan underneath it. But there's, I mean, I painted the floors with a, with a two-part epoxy, and they look like a floor in a, you know, an antique car. So, the floors are very, very clean, and that's one of the reasons people want to come and store, because it's so clean. You know, there's no windows and there's no dust. People are very, very, I mean, they're lined up like cordwood right now to come in here next year, so.
Floor drains? Do you have floor drains?
No, there's no floor drains. No.
Perfect.
So, is there, I know when we talked about the previous application, we talked about adding spill kits and having just language in the plan set that said that they would implement a monitoring program and provisions. Does that carry over to this application, Tim?
It would, but I certainly would encourage the board to include that as a recommended note on the plan as well.
Okay. Yes, we would want to reflect that same thing, basically, if, that you would maintain what you're doing, that you'd have a robust system to inspect and then means to capture and protect spill runoff from dripping cars and that sort of thing, a spill kit, et cetera. Great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Happy to invite any of the board members down, take a tour, and you'll see for yourself that there's just no, no issues like that.
Good. Tim, with respect to the design of the building, and I'm looking at the elevations on the last page, when is, does this building fall within those where we normally ask an applicant to break up the long expanses outside the building?
It does not fall into the industrial design district corridor. This is a commercially zoned piece of property, so it does not have those design criteria.
So, we don't have to do any of that stuff?
Correct.
Okay, good. On the rear elevation, you got a vault sign in the back. Is that intended to face towards the interstate, catch those people? Is it a lighted sign or just a regular sign?
Don't know yet, but if I can, I'd love to have it.
Okay. I don't, I don't know. That'd be up to Tim to sort out for us on that, but.
We might be going to the zoning board with that.
Yeah. I expect a challenge there.
Although, the sign that you have up on DW Highway with the externally illuminated sign rather than an internally illuminated sign, I think it looks great.
Yeah.
I think it's a good choice, very tastefully done.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? For the sake of procedure, we'll ask if any of butters or citizens wish to weigh in, and seeing none, we'll close that. Does the board wish to take up the waiver? Does the board wish to consider granting final approval or follow the staff's recommendation that we continue it? What's the will of the board? We could continue the, we could take up the waiver next time instead of this time? Lynn?
Can I ask a question on the, can I ask a question on the sidewalk waiver?
Of course.
You're contending that because the pavement or the parking pavement goes, extends so close to the street that there really isn't a need for a sidewalk? And my, my question would be, I can understand that, and that makes sense. I'm thinking in the winter, is that going to be plowed so it's pedestrian accessible?
I think the two-thirds of the frontage does have pavement that goes up right next to the right of way, and it would make sense to have, if you have a sidewalk, not to put it in the right of way because it gets even closer to the traveled way, so that we had proposed to have it on, an easement on the property. Two-thirds of that would be paved. The other one-third is just grass or gravel right now, and that isn't done. So, part of the waiver was to, I believe, to leave the, give the easement, but not to actually pave the rest of that. As far as plowing it, some of that can be plowed, but I don't know how much that sidewalk would get utilized in the near future. It's there, I think, for future planning, because the site right next door has no sidewalk, and then you go, I don't know if there's anything up to Reed's Ferry. I don't think there's any sidewalks up there. You go quite a ways before there's any other sidewalk, so that where, it's my understanding we're leaving it as a easement, so it's potential to have a sidewalk in the future that would be maintained and plowed, but right now, it would be limited use.
I think we face that same issue with almost all the sidewalks up around DW Highway, where we're kind of, you can only require an applicant to deal with their own frontage. There is sidewalk in front of Dunk's and the post office in the other direction, so it's not that far before there's a connection. I tend to agree with Lynn's sentiment and the applicant's sentiment that the bit of grass that's up there by the road doesn't need to be paved over, but whether there's some part of what's already there that's paved that could be somehow partitioned off to be a sidewalk could be a way to accomplish this, and it's obviously not new pavement, but, and I.
I want to make sure it's winter accessible.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I don't know whether it's a matter of some kind of a barrier or timber or something to kind of take four feet of pavement and say the cars park on the other side of that, if there are cars, and that, or whether it's painted. I mean, paint's not quite enough because the cars will park right over it, but I think that people entering one of the driveways and kind of going inside of the grass across the front and outside to move on to the next lot is all that's necessary, and all that pavement's already there, so it's not really a need to build something as much as it is to.
A white line is going to do the trick. A white line.
I think in the summertime it would because people will see it, but in the wintertime, maybe even, I don't know, those little concrete things you put at the end of a parking, a parking space that stops the car from rolling forward across the front or something like that? Wooden timber or some, you know, not, not a lot for sure, but.
If I might, a curb stop can work, but in the wintertime, that's where they become problematic because you can't plow the snow because they're sitting there. So, if you want it cleared, then it may be better not to have those in the wintertime. If people's used to walking through there in the summer because they can see it, if the snow's cleared off completely, then they can see the striping, if that's amenable.
And could I suggest, Mr. Chairman, that if we did that, we would now convert that piece of property into a sidewalk, and the responsibility for plowing goes away from these gentlemen and falls on Public Works legally.
We're not putting a sidewalk there. We can, I'm considering giving them a waiver for a sidewalk with the assurance that their property is going to be, that's not going to be a.
I think the problem is pretty easily solved by me putting a four-inch stripe, okay, the hallway, and then I'll instruct the, my, the fellow that plows, okay, not to plow everything down to the grass, but he's got to pull it towards the middle.
Correct.
Okay?
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
That's, that's easily done.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yep.
I think that accomplishes a lot, and although we talked about curb stops, frankly, there's so little vehicular traffic on your site, summer or winter.
I don't care about those.
No, there's very little traffic.
Stripe is fine.
It's not, it's not like people are going to be dodging cars in your lot.
We're not having auctions there.
Nelson?
Very few people walk, very few people walk by there.
Yeah, no question, although the more sidewalks there are, the more opportunity there is for people to think about it or try it, so. Nelson, you had a comment?
Okay, well, yeah, I have a couple of comments with regard to the sidewalk. I think that, having viewed the site and the site plan here, I think, originally, I didn't think much of the idea of just using on the edge of the pavement of the parking lot, but having looked at it and realizing how little people actually use that whole parking lot, I've never seen it full except maybe once in a while in the summer when the farmer's market's there. And that's something we might want to talk about, too, before we're done, is other uses that are planned here. But I would recommend the, the five, it should be five feet to be consistent with our regulation, and that it be a painted walk across the area that is paved. I also think the idea of the curb stops is a good one. It stops cars from blocking it, and once it's painted, it becomes obvious that it's a sidewalk. And include in that crosswalks across the two open entrances that are there, so that people know if they're walking there, they know they can follow that, that path, and that becomes the sidewalk. I would also recommend that we pave the northerly section, the northerly segment to the property line. It's just dirt right now.
It's a few feet.
Yeah.
I, I can see the thought process that goes behind the painting some crosswalk stripes because it's just more paint, and it's not really that big of a burden on the applicant to do that. On the curb stops, although that was my idea, I hear what the applicant's saying, in that he can't reach the, the quote sidewalk with a plow truck once we put concrete curb stops in front of it.
Yeah.
And so, for him to be the one that's plowing it, it needs to be without those concrete curb stops.
Well, it depends where you push the snow, and it also depends on, you know, does they, well, let's talk about how that parking lot is used, because I never see a car in it except one for sale now and then.
Not being used, except for the farmer's market.
Yeah.
And those nice car shows, yeah.
And we've got what they call cruise nights. They're coming there, people with, you know, antique cars, and they gather around there every Thursday night, and that, but that's the only, they're the only people using it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, in terms of layout, Nelson, what I was thinking is, he's got a grass area, and then that first pavement on the other side of the grass area is quote sidewalk for four or five feet.
Yeah.
And then if you were dividing it, you'd put a white line or something there to separate it from the bulk of the parking lot, but if you built anything physical, then he's got five feet of pavement on the other side of whatever that is, a curb stop or ballards or whatever, that he can't reach with his truck, his plow truck.
Yeah.
So, that's why I would say, let's go with what he's suggesting, which is, paint is enough.
Yeah, paint it, and the plow truck is down, pushes the snow towards the building, and that should work fine.
I mean, it, I agree that a car might look at it to park on it, but probably not very often. I mean, nobody else parking anywhere else in the parking lot. There's a whole lot of, be somewhere.
There's so much room to park anyway. I didn't think backing it up a bit would hurt, but anyway, I guess I could agree with that, but I'd like to see it extended to the property line.
Well, I think it's generous of the applicant to come up with a proposal that he's actually going to be responsible for the snow on, because it's obviously different than any other sidewalk that we have, and it's a big, important difference to the town. So, I think it's worthwhile to offer some consideration for that, for the benefit of that. With that in mind, to accomplish that, we would have to make a motion for a sidewalk waiver, taking into account the commitments that the applicant's made here tonight, if someone is willing to do that.
I'll, I'll.
Second. What commitment is that? I'd like to hear more of the commitment. I had made a recommendation to extend the pavement to the property line.
Well.
That's not part of what I was moving. I was moving that the, that there would be striping, delineating the walk area, and that there would be no snow allowed to accumulate in that area. I don't think I need to require that, that that would be, I can understand how you'd like to have that, but I don't think that that's required, that we extend the pavement down.
To the rest of the way across the lot?
Right.
And then, the other potential issue is, as the delineation of the sidewalk across the existing paved area is done with paint or whatever, would you actually do crosswalk type stripes across the driveways?
Yes.
And I think that I would support that. Counselor Mahan, you seconded that motion. Do you agree with the motion incorporating crosswalk type painting across the driveways?
We also need the justification for the waiver, which of the two criteria.
Okay, let's take a look at that in a second. I know that Nelson, you're looking at the potential to have a different motion or at least a notion that we ought to.
Addition to this motion to include the, the distance to the edge of the property on the north side.
We can handle that in one of two ways. If you wish to amend the motion that's on the floor, we could take it up that way and gather a second and vote first on the amendment and then on the main motion, or we could consider whether we wanted to address the existing motion as it stands and then decide later what to do, if anything, extra in addition to that.
Will the mover accept a friendly amendment?
I'd like, I'd like to see it as, as a separate motion.
Separate, well, a separate motion, well.
You can do whatever you'd like.
We're talking about, it looks like about 200 feet, is that right? Of.
The grass, the non-paved area to the north there?
The non-paved area to the north.
It's a relatively lengthy piece there.
Right.
You're talking, yeah.
I think you're right.
Roughly 200 feet.
200 feet, yeah.
Okay.
Just for clarification, so you're not talking about paving the small section that connects you back towards Duncan?
No, we're talking about paving from where the existing pavement is going towards the Summit Building. Because when you face the building, it's on the right-hand side.
Yeah, it's this side right here.
And it, it's currently grass.
Okay, but on the other side, is it currently that?
Finishing all the way to the Dunkens?
Yeah.
I don't think, I think that the parking lot apron actually almost joins in with the McGaw Bridge Road Apron.
Yeah.
Right there.
Okay, so it's easy to transition around. Okay, that, I think that would be my concern, at least for right now.
I would also note that per the plans that are proposed by the applicant, there is a sidewalk easement shown along that portion of the grassed area to the north, but they are not proposing to construct it at this time.
Okay. So, there is a motion and second on the floor.
We still need the justification for the waiver.
Strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and waivers not be contrary to the spirit and standard of the regulations.
Okay, so we've got that designated.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion with respect to amending the motion, or do we want to go ahead and vote on it like it stands? Nelson, you gonna hang up for secondary?
Well, I had asked to amend the motion. The mover wouldn't accept the amendment.
Okay.
And suggested I do my own motion.
All right, so.
I will propose an amendment.
I will propose an amendment. Let me say this, I will propose an amendment to the motion that would include paving a sidewalk for 200 feet on the north side to the edge of the property.
Is there a second for Nelson's motion to pave the remaining 200 feet to the north?
I'll second.
Second by Desiree. Any discussion? I think it'd be a great place to have some sidewalk. It's flat, it's level, it probably wouldn't be that expensive. There's going to be a little bit of paving going on in the back. It could be done at the same time. I don't know what the applicant wants to weigh in and make some comments about that, but it doesn't seem to be an enormously difficult bit of sidewalk to add. Mike?
I think the only other question that I've had is that when do we consider that still the same part of the motion of maintenance? You know, so you've got the, it's going to be a harder, harder way to maintain that with a plow truck then.
Mike, your own, but.
No, no, no.
It'd be a harder way to maintain that.
I would not recommend that. The applicant should not be responsible for maintaining that within an easement.
Yeah, if it's built like a public sidewalk, then that's the town's.
Yes.
Motion and a second to amend the motion on the floor to add the 200 feet of sidewalk. Any other comments on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One, two, three, four opposed. So, the motion to amend fails three to four with Lynn, Alastair, Counselor Mahan, and Desiree opposed. And that leaves us with the main motion, which is to grant the sidewalk waiver, subject to the commitments that the applicant's made to stripe part of the parking lot as a pedestrian way with crosswalks across the driveway. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? One opposed. Nelson, any abstaining? Six, one, zero, two, grant that waiver with the applicant's commitments. And with that, the staff has recommended that we table, the applicant has asked to move forward. I don't think that time-wise, it will make an enormous difference one way or another for where he gets to put a shovel in the ground because of the necessity to complete the conditions of approval and get signatures before he's going to get a building permit anyway. What's the will of the board? Well, is there any other discussion on that question? Is there any discussion on any other part of the application?
I will say this, that in terms of continuing versus continued, versus conditional final approval tonight, again, when this memo was written, we did not even have the escrow in place. Now that we do have the escrow in place, I'm in a much more comfortable position knowing that CLD can do the review and it will be completed. So I'm less reticent as long as the board is comfortable with CLD being conditions of approval, that I'm comfortable if you're able to go that direction.
As the applicant, if we granted conditional approval subject to CLD's review and any other reviews that are incomplete, it essentially means you've got to comply with whatever their recommendations are. You don't get a chance to sort of disagree with them unless you want to come back and see us and argue why. Is he comfortable?
We'll just wait.
Just wait?
Yeah.
More comfortable with that? Okay.
I missed that, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I apologize.
They've agreed to wait, so they're okay.
Oh, they've agreed to wait?
The applicants agreed to wait. No, Lynn?
So I would like to move that we continue this until the June 2nd meeting? Is that correct? With no further notice to Butters.
Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a second.
Second by Mr. Mills. Before we vote on that motion, is there any other discussion that this board wishes to have with the applicant about the proposal in general? I'd offer one comment that I'm just, I'm really glad that your business is doing as well as it is and so many people want to get in there.
And I'd like to echo your earlier comments, Mr. Chairman. I think the thing is, looks so million times better than Xylas ever could do or did. I, I think, go for it.
Well, we're going to continue, we're going to continue to make improvements. I've got envisioned of putting about a 10-foot cupolo on that front building and finishing that roof up. And I think I've got some other good ideas. I want this to be a showcase. And the reason I called it Vault Motor Storage and not Morgan Motor Storage is because I can take Vault to other parts of the state and franchise it. So.
Fantastic.
But I want this to be a showpiece and I plan I continue to make improvements. And I'm looking forward to, you know, working with the city here.
Thank you, thank you with that. Desiree?
Were you full up this year? How was your, have you been?
We were filled.
Completely filled.
You couldn't put a wheelbarrow in there in November.
Fantastic.
No, you couldn't.
That's good.
And they're all, and they're all coming back.
That's wonderful. I, Tim can probably tell you that when Tim came on as the Community Development Director, I identified a handful of sites in town that were the sort of, boy, wouldn't it be great to get something going on here? And Xylas was one of them. And Old Shaw's, which is accomplished, is another one of them. And 40 Continental Boulevard was the third. And the fourth one hasn't gone anywhere quite yet, but he's working on it.
But it'll work.
He's working on it. So he's done a good job. And I think it's great to have us, an active business rather than an empty building that's, that was falling apart. I think you've done a great job.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Counsel Mahan?
Yeah, I can only add the same sentiments coming from the town council regarding that property.
I'm sorry, what?
I can only add that the town council has the same general approval sentiment.
Mr. Boyd?
Pardon?
Boyd? Go Boyd?
He's on the town council?
He's on the town council. I'm not Mr. Boyd.
No, no, I know.
I'm too tall and I got too much hair.
All of the town council is very pleased with what you've done with that site.
Thank you.
Counsel Mahan is the town council's representative to our planning board, so he can offer their thoughts and input at our meetings.
Well, tell the tax assessor that he appreciates it through-
Like that a little bit?
I got the bill today and I almost fell over. I mean, it doubled. Oh, wow.
You're doing a good job and look what happened.
Looks twice as good.
Well, it's based on the value and you've improved the value, so. Any other discussion before we take the motion to continue? All in favor of continuing to June 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero, two, continue. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for telling us about the project.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Item seven on our agenda is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. You've seen listed on this agenda and perhaps one earlier than this, a preliminary discussion of soils information for potential ordinance amendments as requested by Pete Gagnon. That presentation is not ready for prime time quite yet. There's a little more work and a little more meetings to go on.